Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of March 12th, nineteen, no, 2018. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting, I would like the board to join me in a moment of silence as we acknowledge the loss of one of our very own precious students, Carmelo Prince Singleton, and we wish his parents find some, and family members, find peace in the coming days. And again, I hope all of you have power and are dry and warm and have functioning generators.
You realize that the people who are listening has power.
No, well, they have Wi-Fi. They could have Wi-Fi. They could just be in a garage somewhere, holding up, they're Paneris, there you go. All right, let's move on. And I'd like resolution to approve the minutes of the work session business meeting of the Board of Education of February 8th, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd now like to announce that the Treasurer's Report for January 2018 is available in the business office. And let's move right into our presentations, which I believe we open with budget presentations by operations. Correct?
Everyone, I'm here tonight to present our proposed operations budget for 2018-19. I'd like to get right into it. On the operations and maintenance staffing, there is no changes at all to the staffing. The Director of Operations and Transportation position will be, is funded across two budget lines, obviously operations and transportation. It leaves you with an office clerical of 1.4, one head custodian on this campus, a custodian at the elementary campus, six custodial workers, eight cleaners, and one groundskeeper. The staff maintains three schools totaling 290,000 square feet on 72 acres. Contractual expenses, as you can see there is a large group of it, includes utilities, fuel, oil, safety compliances, rubbish, propane, assorted other upkeep items on the buildings, grounds, and equipment systems, BOSI services, safety, risk management, and telepath, regional telephone services. We get state aid on all BOSI services. Fuel, oil, and propane are purchased from state contract. We estimate our use at 44,800 gallons of fuel oil at the elementary school campus. That's the only campus, as you all know, that uses fuel oil. This should reduce by approximately two-thirds once the elementary school geothermal installed. The high school, middle school campus heating and cooling are derived from our present geothermal system. Large service contracts were obtained through a bid process and requests for proposals. Upkeep of buildings and equipment is generally serviced by term material contracts that are obtained through a bid process. Materials and supplies line is, includes all cleaning materials, floor care products, sanitation, paper products, uniforms, light bulbs, plumbing, and electrical parts, replacement filters, paint, ceiling tiles, and hand tools. Most materials and supplies are purchased through BOSI's bid, our own bids, and through state contracts. The one thing I'd like to go back to is, just to reference for you going forward, is the light bulbs. As you know, we presently use fluorescent bulbs. The price for, roughly the price for the fluorescent is $2 a bulb. If you think about how many bulbs just in the one building. The other piece that doesn't really come up is the price to return the fluorescents. That's $3. So your price per bulb really works out to about $5 each. With the changeover, again, with the EPC, they're on a 10-year guarantee. We won't be changing, they won't need to change them out every year, and as they go out, they are replaced and it is covered under the EPC for the 10-year run. These are some of the facilities improvements from this year, starting with the high school. We moved the high school principal's office to room 210 to be amongst the students. Door replacements were done at the high school gym and weight room. New flooring was put in at the high school weight room, new carpeting for the PAC, the hot water system upgrade here at the high school, motorized shades for the library. We converted the rear high school library room for science research. We converted room 117A and B back to a full-size classroom. We converted special ed and the district office spaces that were used downstairs back to classrooms. And we installed and electrified the high school snack bar that's presently on the first floor. Middle school's facilities improvements included an updated teacher's lounge, upgraded health and family and consumer science room at the middle school. We reconfigured the library annexed classrooms at the middle school. Those are the classrooms that were to the, to the left side of the, of the active learning lab. They were, they were actually not configured right, so we reconfigured them and made them so they're window access for all. We continued the renovation of the middle school active learning lab. We upgraded a middle school classroom for Mandarin Chinese distance learning. We installed and electrified a middle school snack bar there in the cafeteria. We upgraded the elevator lift and the cabin at the middle school. And we replaced and upgraded the high school, middle school sewage ejection system, which is part of our Highfields project. Elementary improvements included repaired the elementary school retaining wall by the cafeteria, created a new outdoor education classroom, replaced an elementary school new gym exit doors, added a new bottle filling station at the fourth grade wing, replaced an adult bathroom, the adult, excuse me, reduced, replaced the adult bathroom fixtures to be ADA compliant, and replaced a heater unit in the elementary school kitchen. We've added the security cameras and improved lightings to the upper parking lot. We've moved the district office, special education, and business offices to the new modular at the elementary school campus. The anticipated projects in conjunction with the energy performance contract for the upcoming year will be to recaul windows at the elementary school to reduce heat loss, replace the glass block windows in the music room and gymnasiums at the elementary school, add a fence at the elementary school rear wood line for safety, replace the middle school single pane windows, and renovate middle school art room. So those are, these are all really, you know, projects that'll be accomplished over the summer after school is out. Little anticipated operations in the main district, this is exclusive of salaries. Last year, while the present year is 1,227,000, 127,000. This year, 1,257,891 for an increase of $30,264. Performing Arts Center, we, a number of years ago, we broke out, about five years ago, we broke it out of the operations budget in order to be able to keep a better idea and understanding of what the expenses are in there. So they've been separated from the operations and maintenance budget. These costs include contractual expenses, materials and supplies, and equipment upgrades. Equipment upgrades would include items presently in use that have been part of the original cost of the high school and have exceeded their lifespans and parts and are longer available for AV upgrades. This year, we spent 35, well, our budget was 35,000. Next year, we're budgeting 30,000 for reduction of 5,000. Transportation staffing, again, no changes to staffing. Director of Operations is split there. Head bus driver, you have one. Clerical, drivers, mechanic, and monitors is 21.6 FTE. Transportation vendor, that's our contract with Montoc, will be going out for 20 large buses, six minivans and sports runs. This is an increase of four large buses and one van, and that's needed to implement the new later start pilot program. Shared transportation, and the way we try to save money is to share transportation with other districts where we have students that'll be crossing borders or going to areas closer to other districts. We signed that in 2013. We had renewed a five-year cooperative transportation agreement with 10 school districts, Croton, Harmon, Garrison, Lakeland, Briar Cliff, Haldane, Henhood, Austin, Somers, Yorktown, and Peaks Hill. The intent was for cooperative transportation, which was more economical and efficient. The board will again need to renew this contract this year, so I'm sure the district clerk will be glad to tell you when. This year, we share presently transportation services only with Lakeland. This can change yearly based on component district needs. On the transportation expense side, and equipment includes purchase installation of bus radios, antennas, cameras, and associated parts. Contractual expenses includes tolls, fingerprinted mileage, consultants, vehicle insurance, equipment rental, mandated driver medical examinations and drug testing, bus repairs, and bus safety education, and state mandated certifications. Material and supplies include the general office supplies, vehicle materials, supplies, hand tools, tires, parts, gasoline, diesel fuel, and oil. Gasoline and diesel fuel is purchased in collaboration with Towne Valley. The town purchases the fuel off state contract. The budget summary, again, exclusive of salaries. On the operations maintenance side, there's a change of an increase of $30,264. On the performing arts center side, there's a reduction of 5,000. On transportation, there's an increase of 305,896, which is a direct result of the pilot program. The total is an increase of 331,160. That percent increase is 11.85. Any questions?
I just think we should, I guess, not refer to the later start as a pilot program and more that this is our way forward.
Okay.
Just so people don't think that it's a one-year thing.
Okay. Well, the reason I bring it up is because the last, last board meeting that was, that I was at was, was still called a pilot program for the year, so, but I'll be glad to take that out, so.
And of course, we're gonna look at it after a year. I have no real questions about this budget, but in light of, and I feel like we had extensive conversations several years ago, unfortunately, after Newtown, and we did a lot of changes to our security. I know, as board president, I'm getting inundated by emails from the state and board associations just about security and system. Maybe we can have another, if we can have a presentation another day, Pat, about where we're at. I know we made some changes about our security. We had one plan that was rather costly, and then we scaled down, you know, unfortunately, I don't want to keep talking about it every time there's a school tragedy, but unfortunately, that's when it occurs.
Yeah, I can give you an overview any time on that. I would again caution against giving out exactly what we do because, you know, you don't want to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So I will tell you, though, that I just created a purchase order today. We're gonna test it here at the high school. It's a, it's actually, it's a button that's gonna go up by the kiosk, that if we ever have to go right into lockdown, the kiosk person can just tap this button, every door will lock. So I'm waiting, I've just, we did the purchase order today, and like I say, that should be, probably by next week, I should have that in place for testing. If that, if it works the way I believe it will, then I'll be doing it at all three buildings.
Okay. Just, you know, something to think about maybe in the next upcoming weeks, just, are we alarms, doors? I know we had talked a lot about those trap doors and then went other directions. So, you know, tonight, we have the budget on our mind, and that's enough for one evening, but.
And on the budget side, I wanted to ask about the elementary school fence that we're talking about.
Right.
That was in the original.
It was in the original security proposal. It was taken out, and we feel it's time to put it back in again, you know, just again for children with elopement.
So is that, is that, okay, so that's more designed to keep kids in as opposed to things out, right?
Excuse me.
That's more designed for kids?
Oh, no, yeah, it's to keep kids in, you know, the young kids.
It's not a security, it's not designed to be a security.
Yeah, no, it's not to keep people out, it's really to keep the kids, while they're in the play areas, to keep them in the play area, so.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, it's really, it'll be right along the, you know, the wood line border.
Oh, okay.
So, okay.
No, I just, I think one of the important changes we made in the last couple of years was having a, the SPO there, that, you know, the safety patrol officer, police officer, something like that, at the elementary school. And having that additional officer is, I think, a very, was sort of a major statement about the safety of the elementary school.
Yeah, and the gentleman that you're talking about is George Turner. He's very well-liked by the students. They feel very comfortable coming up to him. He's constantly on patrol in and out of the building. Whenever I'm pulling up, I always find him outside. I'd say nine out of 10 times, he's outside.
Pat, I was wondering on the anticipated projects for 2018-19, that's page eight, I think, I noticed, yeah, a lot of overdue things. And it mentions the replacing the block windows in the elementary school music room and gymnasiums. Is the future after that going to deal with the single pane windows that are also down on those wings there?
Well, that's part, that's actually part of the EPC. This is in addition to, those projects, Ralph, are in addition to.
Oh, this is in addition, oh.
Because again, those, those glass block windows are, you know, they're, they're leaking. And again, we're trying to make the, you know, the envelope as efficient as we can, but those, we, the windows are already is part of it. Matter of fact, the contractor will be here on Wednesday to start taking measurements for the, for the new windows that are going in place.
Okay, so these are in addition to the EPC, then?
Yes. The only, these, these, and the ones here at the middle school, again, same reason. We're going through all of this to get these buildings as efficient as possible, and I'm sure you've all seen what the windows look like over in the middle school. It's time for, you know, 1972, well, they've been replaced once, I believe, but, so I don't want to say from '72, but I'll say 1985.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, while you're walking off, I, once again, I want to use, take advantage to thank, when you look at how many men and women take care of these facilities, and the way they take care of these facilities is cost-effectiveness and high-quality work at its best. So, thank you, and thank you to all of your people.
You have a great crew in all buildings here, and transportation, I don't want to miss out on that.
Your whole department.
Here, sir.
Good evening. So I was asked to provide just a quick update as to where we are in terms of the Facilities Planning Committee. So I borrowed a presentation that was provided by KGND to the Facilities Planning Committee last time we met. I just want to highlight a couple of the things. The committee has worked through several iterations and concepts and drawings, really refining our vision and setting our priorities. Really, I just want to cover what some of our thinking is right now, and I think we're quickly approaching a point where we're had a, we have a firm plan and vision moving forward, but this is just sort of a quick overview as we wait for that. At the elementary school, what we're looking to do is just to invest some money into the existing small gym space that remains pretty much as was in 1935 or so. In fact, including the original chairs that are still in there. So part of this, obviously, it has to be hashed out exactly what we look to do, but it would include some enhancements to the stage for the cultural arts. It would include finding ways to utilize that space during the instructional day while still allowing it to be flexible enough to accommodate assemblies, concerts, and basketball, and other things that happen in that space. So there's no drawings of what it would look like on the inside, but certainly, we wanted to earmark some money to revamp that space. It's got a large footprint within our buildings, and we think we could better utilize that space both within and outside of the instructional day. Around the outside, you see just a couple examples of what they call next-generation classrooms. These are classrooms that we can set up with flexible furniture, and the yellow shaded areas are actually areas for outdoor education space, so ways for us to expand our learning to the outdoors. Where they're seen in the drawings doesn't necessarily mean that's where they would end up. It could be any exterior-facing classroom, but in this drawing are just some potential locations for how we can modernize classrooms while offering some exterior instructional Sorry, going fast. Really, what are, the last meeting, we really confirmed that we thought it was important that our primary focus be the middle school. That middle school is in drastic need of some updating to serve our instructional program and some cosmetic. So I just want to highlight some of the things that we're looking to do at the middle school and items that the committee deemed to be of high priority. This large purple box on the top is the existing gym. Although we're not changing the footprint of the gym in any way, it does include a modernization, maybe removing the wood panels, upgrades to other functions in there, painting, really to fix it up to make it a more useful space. Over here is the existing cafeteria, which, which the stage would remain. This would include upgrades for cultural arts spaces, as well as, in this case, an expanded kitchen, so we would actually be able to cook and serve food for the middle school from the highs, from the middle school, as opposed to transporting it over from the high school, which is what currently happens. You have some new restrooms, and actually, an expanded cafeteria space in our middle school. Our cafeteria does not serve as a place for whole school assemblies. So in this potential drawing, we would expand the size of the cafeteria to allow for a greater number of students to be in there at a single time while cooking and serving the food on-site. Something else that we're considering is creating a new entryway. This existing, this blue area right here is the existing courtyard. So we would turn this into, part of it a new learning commons, part of it part of the main office, and part of it this open entryway space. So students would now enter through the courtyard, which would be enclosed as an entryway. The learning commons to the right would serve as our library. As you may know, the middle school currently does not have a library, so we would be filling that need. And then, although the main office isn't necessarily getting bigger, or is physically getting bigger, we would look to move some of our other support staff, guidance, social worker, psychologist, into that location to free up other space. Up here on the top, oh, and part of this, which isn't on the drawing, we would look to create a performing, a soundproof performing arts space for lessons, similar to what we have at the elementary school. And that would be able for our music teachers to facilitate those small group lessons.
And, some of the, on the serving line of the cafeteria, so they're in desperate need of a new space. Across this music room would be a new choral space, which we would design in concert with the teachers there, and it would be another performing arts space. Part of the cafeteria upgrade would include upgrades to the stage to make it a more modern setting, although we would still host our formal concerts and stuff at the high school. This would be an opportunity to have a better performing arts space at the middle school. And then, really, our goal was to recapture or better utilize existing space. Anything purple is existing. The only new construction is building over this existing courtyard. So these other spaces are really just repurposing existing spaces, turning smaller spaces into larger ones, moving around staff, and it's a way to recapture more instructional space. We lost a couple spaces over here with the expansion of the cafeteria, so we have to recoup a couple spaces over here to make sure we still have enough classrooms to support our instructional program. What's not on here, and something else that we're still considering, is upgrades to our athletics program, and we're exploring a couple different options in terms of how do we best support our student athletes, whether it be additional turf space, or indoor space, or gym space. So I know the committee had a couple of things on the table. The architects were going back to design and talk to state ed regarding a couple of proposals, and I think, once we have the revised plans, we'll have more to share with you. That's it. Did I leave anything out, Dave?
Perfect.
Perfect.
So I'll ask whoever's been on the committee. Pat, we've always had a five-year, or we've had a five-year plan. This is different. This is, I mean, I've heard the words wishlist. How do we prioritize? How do we sell the community? We need this versus want this. And, you know, how do we decide which of these things we need and want? I haven't been on, this is, I'm, I'm talking as a taxpayer right now.
Right.
I am not talking to somebody who's been in these meetings, so.
Yeah, our, our five-year plan is, you know, is developed and changed every year, you know, it's updated every year. And those are the things that really need to be done in order to maintain, you know, for the most part, it's maintenance, things to keep things safe and secure, and to maintain the buildings and the grounds. This here is, you know, what the Facilities Committee feels is things that we need to help improve, education, education and athletic experience for our students. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's not part of the five-year plan, although there's some items that could and will overlap.
And there's an opportunity, from a financial standpoint, that exists now, in the next five years, that we have some retiring debt that allows us to do facilities projects like this, major upgrades to our existing facilities without impact to the taxpayer. So that's, and that window will close in five years, so now's the time to do it. And that's been a big part of our committee, is getting the, the input from, of course, Jill, and, and bringing in financial advisors to talk to us about how this can fit in to our long-term fiscal planning and, and have zero impact on our taxpayers.
I think in terms of a history of a district, there are cycles that one goes through, and, you know, as one completes payment for a large project with a history, if we do not seize these opportunities, we lose them, and therefore, we cannot keep up with educational change, with the needs that we see. For example, one of them is in the STEM area, in the science and technology, looking at our classrooms and how do they provide and adapt to that kind of role. Looking at our spaces that have not kept up, our gym, for example, or our cafeterias, that have not kept up with the kind of planning and thinking about food service, for example, health, about the gym space that clearly has been used and overused. So it's looking at those moments in time in a, in a district when you have the funds that do not impact the tax. That, that is the key. And if, if those times are not seized, once they're gone, the increase that would have to take place in a district budget and in tax would be something that, yes.
When it comes to the point that they have to be done.
Yes, that, something.
We can't, we won't be able to do it.
We will not be able to do them. We would not be able to keep up. So it's, it's sort of imperative to seize these opportunities.
And I think you just need to visit the middle school. It, it's, not much has been done there since I went there in the 70s. And, and the high school, obviously, is beautiful and new. The elementary school, we, we had, it was a very extensive and thoughtful committee that we ran with about 30 people that showed up every time for six meetings, and stakeholders from all over the community. You know, the, the town, town people, you know, just, you know, taxpayers, parents, teachers, administrators, all of the administrators have been involved and given input, and, and the decisions, we had a lot of grand plans to begin with, but the decisions had to, had to then focus on revamping the middle school as a main, as a main crux of what we're, what we can do.
Great, thank you.
I think it's important that we sort of, we capture our reality. Although our class size or enrollment is not increasing, our curricular program continues to become more robust. So our room utilization in this building is like 99%. We do music lessons on the cafeteria serving line. We teach instructional courses and certain instructional classes in the choral room on risers. We do, we have content area, core content area classes that take place in the art and technology room. It's, it's our reality, is we need new, more modern instructional spaces. We, we need to update this building that, that has very much sort of been neglected over the past 50 years or so. And it's not a wishlist where, I mean, we, we, there was a lot of things that people were very excited about, that were taking out of these proposals because they weren't deemed at the highest priority, they weren't deemed to be fiscally responsible, they would have or could have pushed us beyond that tax-neutral line that, that we're committed to not cross. So it's certainly not a wishlist, and we have, I could share lots of wishlist items that we discussed.
We had a big one, yeah.
It was a big one. I think the first meeting, we spent about $100 million.
I heard swimming pool.
We had to sort of wean ourselves back to what was realistic, so.
All right, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot with that question, but thank you. Ms. Figarella, you're on.
I'm down.
I thought you had the buzzer.
Natalie, skipping you.
No, Jill's gonna go in between. I'm skipping tonight.
You're not skipping, but I don't see it there. I see it up there.
I'm doing the presentation on the bus proposition because I feel that it ties in with the facilities. operations and transportation and then we'll go on to special ed after that.
That's really good thinking. It flows nicely. There's this visceral sound from my right. I think, should we add snowshoes to the budget for all students? And maybe igloos, skis, sleds. Sump pumps.
All right, we can retrofit buses to become snowmobiles instead.
I can break into the chitty chitty bank bank any moment if you'd like.
It's on board docs if you can't find it. And it's connected to the agenda on board docs.
I don't want to stop their mojo. Anybody feel like breaking into song or telling a joke?
Maybe we'll have Natalie go first and do the special education presentation and I'll.
Did you want her, Fran actually said you want her to go right into the superintendent report? Or does it make sense to do the presentation? Flexibility.
Good evening. So that is our entire department, um, that we took a picture on, uh, opening day. It was a great event and kind of kicked off the year, um, just sort of really getting on the same page and talked a lot about co-teaching and co-teaching models, which has been a really big push, um, over this, the past few years. So, um, so it was just a great day. This is the October two thousand seventeen snapshot. And what that does is really gives us an idea of how many students, um, are on one day in October, um, which is sort of this generalized, um, look at, at where we are in the least restrictive environment. And that is really how many students, um, are participating in general education classrooms. And eighty percent of our stu, uh, eighty percent of the time, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine students, eighty percent of the time are in general education. Um, the number in the middle, um, is our students really that have either a partial program where they might receive math, um, in a smaller class setting and then go out for social studies and science, um, into a general education classroom with support. And then, um, fifteen students are in general education, um, less than forty percent of the day. And that really is our students who struggle, um, in multiple areas and re, receive in a lot of support in a smaller class environment for most of their day. The out-of-district placements, um, as you can see, we've, we've held pretty steady at our elementary and middle schools, um, where we did see an increase over the past few years is at our high school. Five of those students are graduating this year, so that number will significantly change. However, um, a lot of the students, um, three of the students came, moved into the district and they were already placed out. And then there were a few other students who needed, um, that extra support. But as you know, and as you'll see later in my, uh, slides, some of the changes that we're making in order to bring our students and to, to reassure, um, our community that we are looking to serve our students here in our, in our home district. And then, um, homebound instruction, that is, those are really students who generally either struggle, um, with some time of, some type of physical illness, whether that's cancer or some other immune disorder or whatever that may be. Um, those students, um, receive some level of homebound instruction. And then we have one student who is placed in a residential setting. Our staffing needs, um, as you can see, I'm going in, uh, pretty much at the same level of services. One assistant superintendent, one CSE, CPSE chairperson, six clinicians. Um, the clinicians are mentioned in the other slides, but, but technically, um, they fall mostly under PPS. And speech therapists, we're going in at the same. We are decreasing one special education teacher. And that is because our numbers at our elementary school, it's in line with our elementary school. Um, just our, the number of students we have, um, just doesn't, we, we are able to decrease. Um, that, we have one leave replacement there this year, so that person understands that she will not be returning. The teacher aides, um, we have one retirement and that position will not be replaced. And then we have two teaching assistants. Um, because of the structural changes in some of our programs, we feel secure in, um, moving forward with decreasing by two. However, if a student moves in, we haven't done any of our CSEs, but we do feel fairly confident that we can absolutely recommend a decreasing in two. Jill knows, you know, and Fran knows that every year, um, after our CSEs, we kind of make sure that all of that looks, um, the same. So if there are any changes, I'll alert the board. So our related services, our services are going to continue. Um, the areas of related services are OTPT speech. Um, you could see that not just special education students benefit from OTPT and speech services. We service lots of general education students. Um, you could see that these are for all, this, the seating was really developed by our OTs and our PTs. And it really benefits so many students now. Um, if you walk around the high school or the middle school, you'll see our students who, um, you know, it allows them to provide movement in the class. It allows them to, uh, move their chairs and regroup and, and there's just so mu, so much more student engagement when you have, um, the physical support that students need in order to sort of keep moving, especially during those eighty-minute periods. It's nice to have, um, the OTs and PTs providing this type of, um, support in general education classrooms so that students can, um, you know, continue to move in that eighty-minute period and, and still, still learn and get sort of their, their nervous energy or their, their, you know, sometimes our students really struggle with attention and, and focus and this, um, some of that movement really helps. So their, their therapies provide so much support to, to all of our students. So we'll continue with all of those services. These are just some more pictures of OT and PT, some things we do to service students. Um, as you can see, it's, it's movement, it's really regulating students and helping them, uh, you know, learn how to write and, and really self-regulate. So let me see if I can get this to play here. Whoop. I don't know what, just, there we go. Nope. Didn't work. Didn't work. Maureen, do you know how to get back?
Resource from the black box, that's a bit.
For anybody watching at home, thank you for your patience.
Can you not right-click not to get the link and just copy it out?
You've gone incognito. If we have to survive without pictures of pretty children in resource room.
Wanted to show you, um, really what a multi-sensory reading program looks like and how involved, um, that is. And, and lots of times we recommend a resource room, especially for a student, uh, with a reading disability. What we, what I want to communicate is that the service is so valuable and truly changes the lives of many of our students. Um, students who are dyslexic and really need explicit instruction in reading, um, we bring them through what's called a multi-sensory approach. That could be Wilson. It's an Orton-Gillingham-based approach where you really teach the rules of sound, of, of reading. From the most, you know, minute piece of reading, um, in phonemic awareness to the bigger picture of blending and then being able to sound out words. So, um, maybe one of these days I'll be able to show you that video. Um, but it is really highly involved and it, the training that is required of our teachers, um, is extensive and, uh, has really impacted so many students. And the, you know, some of our students come back even years later and, and just, you know, even though they describe at the time, they're like, it was like torture, you know, but yet really takes a student who, um, cannot read. Um, and it sounds like it would, it's far-fetched, but really we have high schoolers that really struggle with, with reading. And when you're able to see, um, this program work in its entirety, when they, when they're really brought through the program with fidelity, it changes their lives and it changes how they can access the world. Um, and it's a great thing to see. So, um, this is another service that we'll continue with. It's a consultant teacher. Really that is where a special education teacher will either directly consult with a child, um, who has a disability or that child's teacher and provide instructional support. Integrated co-teaching is really where, um, two teachers, a special education teacher and a general education teacher, um, work together on meeting the needs of all students in the classroom. We've had a lot of focus, um, on co-teaching and what that looks like and the deliver, delivery of services for students. Um, there are two particular models that we're really, are trying to hone in on, and that is station teaching. And that's really where you break up the curriculum into smaller groups and where students go, are taught in, you know, in smaller groups and they move through the different groups of the different skills that are being taught. And that really allows a teacher to focus on, uh, smaller group instruction because you're able to provide, um, you know, either two or three or four different groups and cover the curriculum that way. Parallel teaching, um, a lot of the teachers are able to use now, um, because of the movable furniture. Parallel teaching is where the two teachers will take two different groups and really pull out content and focus on different instructional, um, opportunities during that, um, lesson. So the movable furniture in the future is huge if we're going to continue, uh, the co-teaching model. And the co-teaching model is probably the fastest growing model and continues to be across the state. And specialized class, um, setting is really, um, just for students who need that smaller environment. It is really a parallel curriculum, so it is the regular typical curriculum, um, but with certain content, uh, focused on more heavily than other content. And, uh, some of the new and ongoing initiatives, um, really just to refine how we are delivering specially designed instruction, making sure that, uh, in K one-two, we're focusing on decoding and encoding screenings and individual reading, uh, intervention. Universal design for learning is really just about access and how we, uh, you know, make sure that the curriculum, how students can access the curriculum. Um, and then really exploring the use of standards-based assessments. And when I talk about standards-based assessment, I mean that so the students don't see a grade right away. They really see feedback and then worry about the grade because it really is about feedback and making sure the feedback that they're getting is going to help them grow as learners. And then some of the, um, you know, you've heard me talk about the, the new program at the high school track. And really that is where, um, we're going to try and change some of the students and their support here in the high school and making sure that we're creating opportunities for students, uh, to bring, you know, to bring, be able to service them here and making sure that, um, we're using a combination of different models of teaching in order to meet their needs. So these are some of the trips that our, our students are taking during the school year. This was an ice skating trip. Um, it really was about building relationships and trust with the teachers, um, regrouping with students, making sure that they, um, literally can lean on each other and just building a safe environment for, for many students who have struggled with academic work. This was another, uh, this is during the TREC program. It's a one period, uh, where students go and they just take sort of all of the skills that they're learning, um, in their other classes and, and apply it and have fun. Mr. Denco, um, is pretty creative. And then here is some, they, again, putting their math skills to work, um, building bridges, um, looking at the bridge types and creating a bridge together, um, building rockets and doing the math that goes along with how far it will go and how, um, how it will be launched. And, uh, apparently it went up two feet, two hundred feet in the air. So those are just some more pictures of what we're doing. So even though it's a free period for our students or, or a non, uh, you know, sort of regions-bound class, this is what they're doing in this class. It, it's incredible, um, working on the math skills that they've learned in their typical, um, regions-bound classes and then really using it and using it in groups of students and making sure that, um, that they're building relationships while learning and while having, um, fun. Great program. Um, one of the initiatives that I think that you should really be aware of, um, is that looking into next year and beyond is the school counseling position. That position, um, where we know it as a guidance position. New York State is coming out with, um, I mean, I can click on the regs, but it's just the regulations and nobody wants to read regulations on a, in a presentation. But really what, what they've done is the school counseling position used to be a regular typical masters, thirty-credit masters program. They've now extended it to a sixty-credit course. Um, they're requiring school districts, um, starting in two thousand and nineteen to do a lot of pre-vocational work at, at the middle school level and a lot of support services, um, will be added. So those are some changes that are coming down the pike that the board and the community should be aware of. Um, as you know, we have struggled immensely with mental health, um, concerns at the high school. We are not unique. We are not alone in this. Um, every meeting I go to in this, in the county and out across the state, um, high schools and middle schools are really, and elementary schools really, um, as well, are struggling with, um, mental, significant mental health issues. And whether that's because of social media or because of the pressures or, um, all of it. You know, that really, I think the state is, is right in the response, um, to ensuring it happens and moves forward. Um, but yet it is going to be, you know, a shift for school districts for sure and an added, um, position likely for a lot of middle schools. and an added position likely for a lot of middle schools.
But not necessarily. The regulation is to have a K-12 integrated counseling plan
Exactly.
overseen by a certified school counselor.
Exactly.
It may involve additional staffing. They don't necessarily have to be
It could. It may not.
guidance counselors or school counselors.
Exactly. And I think that if we really look at the vocational piece of it, that piece is easier to manage than, you know, than it's the mental health concerns for me that are so significant and really impacting how school districts are functioning across the state.
And I think what I like, the fact that I like that it's an initiative, it is on, it's a need on all of our lives. We've had too many crises that have affected our children after graduation that maybe different work
Correct.
or they're still in school could have helped. And I think if it does nothing else, it makes us look at our plan. What do we have before we jump to getting a position? How can we reuse what's working? Anything that makes us oversee. And I know, I think it has to be done in the 1920s school year, but can we begin to look at what we have now? Are you already doing that?
We already, we already started to do that.
I'm sure.
Again, the vocational pieces are easier to manage and can really be
Then even embedded in the classroom.
Right, embedded into the classrooms and embedded into, it really is that mental health component. And the school counselor, that training does look different than what it used to. Again, it went from the 30-credit typical guidance counselor look to really a clinical change in what they are mandated to do and mandated to provide. So that position looks very different than what it used to look like historically.
Absolutely. That's great.
Any questions?
Do you think there's going to be a supply of those people out there with that certification? Or that 60 hours you're talking about?
I think that the state is preparing for it. They've opened up a lot of opportunities for students to achieve the certification in a different, in different pathways. So if you've had one master's degree, you would have to just supplement it. They've allowed some flexibility in obtaining the certification. I know that there are certainly on the horizon schools counselor position, people that are being prepared and will be ready to go over the next year or two. So I do think the state has responded with the flexibility and the certification.
Just one piece that we wanted to make sure the board was aware of was the fact that we run an ESY program here and that, that will be impacted by the funding, which will not be the same if the budget that the governor has provided goes through. It used to be 80% of aid on the
ESY is extended school year.
Not anymore, if this goes through and maybe Jill
We don't have any determination on that yet, but if it does, if it does go through, we could be looking at a 20% reimbursement rather than an 80% reimbursement, which is a huge difference.
It's significant.
And it's only, it's 20% of what they approve. It's not even 20% of what you actually, you know, end up spending on it because it's kind of like an already determined amount that they've come up with that you should be spending on it, but
Well, it's moving to a wealth-based model versus a flat
Yeah, so it'll range from 20 to 50%, but we'll be in the 20% range.
And so we are planning to send a letter.
Right, and we, right, we will send a letter to the state for sure, to the commissioner and to our governor. But I think it is really important that we understand the impact that that can have. We are mandated by regulation that if, if a student regresses and what we do, let me back up a minute. So extended school year is summer school basically for students with disabilities. The New York State regulations require districts to look at regression as the marker to provide those services. What we do here in Putnam Valley, we collect a lot of data before and after breaks, you know, from the fall to the end of the summer. We look at all those breaks. We look at how a student progresses. And we, we look at that data to support whether or not we, a student regresses at any point in time or their disability is so severe that it just automatically qualifies them to, to receive services. So there are those, both of those components. So we, we do that so that the mandate isn't going away. It's just the formula of reimbursement that will change. So we are still required to provide services regardless. So
Maybe a question for Jill on this, just so we get our heads around the potential impact on the, on the budget. What do we spend now on this program?
Yeah, probably between around $350,000. But we get reimbursed, not 80% because it's only 80% of, like I said, what they, what they allow you to get back based on costs that you've established with them over the, over the, over the years. So, I mean, you're going to lose at least, I would, an estimate around $150,000 if we go on and provide the services that we provide now in our own environment. There are other options that we might need to explore.
Yep. We, a couple of things. One is there are always, you know, we can certainly look at BOCs as an option. They don't always have the appropriate services. If we continue to keep our students here, we believe that we've made enough programmatic changes in the training that the teachers have received in order to service our students in a different way, but not compromise their level of services. So the training that we've provided throughout last year and this year, we believe that if, you know, those teachers providing our student services can change enough that we would decrease the cost of what we're providing, but not necessarily impacting the students in their, what they receive.
Are the metrics and the requirements by the state different than what we actually provide services for? Like for instance, the metrics they use for, for what they would say you need to have them go to, you have to use ESY services is different than what we do and do we provide a higher level or more than the requirement?
I think in the past, with some of our reading services, we used to, but the training that the teachers have all received, they'll be able to just do that in a classroom instead of being, doing pull-out services. So that's really the significant change is that those teachers now have been trained in order, so they can provide that service right in the classroom instead of receiving pull-out services, which I guess could be considered above and beyond. It wasn't because the teacher wasn't trained, but so they had to receive the reading service. But now that the teachers that will directly be working with them have that training, we should be able to avoid that cost.
So you're doing pull-out in the summer program?
Correct.
And now we wouldn't have to.
And now we don't have to. Correct. So that's it. And then, you know, the multiple pathways to graduation, again, this slide will be up online so people can go and look at it. There are multiple pathways to graduation now, working towards a Regents diploma. So we've responded. Principal Antriari and I are looking at, and the guidance department and, you know, the school counselors are all looking at different ways in order to allow students the greatest opportunity to achieve a Regents diploma. Again, it's so complicated that it would take me about an hour just to even, I mean, you know. So we are responding. Some of the ideas that we're considering are, you know, algebra over two years or the sciences over a two-year period so that it's broken up over time for our students. Making sure that we're creating sort of that hybrid approach in terms of smaller classes that are attached to a gen ed class, not just a standalone class, but really attached to a co-teaching class or a general education class and then providing support so that we have a, you know, greater opportunity to have students achieving Regents diploma. Is that, any questions?
I don't think so. I just have one question way back when. What are, I don't know if I'm asking what are our numbers or what's the distinction between consultant teacher direct and co-teach? And do we, I don't believe we have to offer both, but I know most districts do.
Yep. I think we offer, for us in Putnam Valley, we offer co-teaching
More?
in general. There are some students who may, and I'll just give you an example, who consultant teacher services are very, it's a very small amount of students that receive consultant teacher services. That is really for a student maybe who might have a traumatic brain injury and just need some support or some, like a routine or just making sure that that student has, is organized well enough.
Or just different modifications.
But in general, can function in general education, but just needs that bit of extra support. Anything else? Questions? Thank you.
Take two.
Sorry.
Oh, it's fine. We have lights on and we're warm. I think, yeah.
For now.
Ideas of basic hierarchy needs have changed so dramatically.
Good.
Okay. Okay, so a couple of meetings ago, we talked, which I feel like was a very long time ago, we talked about a bus proposition for the upcoming year for the ballot in May, which has to do with our district buses. Has nothing to do with our contracted buses. It has to do with maintaining our transportation needs that we house in the district. So what we have is, we're talking about sustaining our own equipment. So right now, we have a transportation contractor, like I just mentioned. They provide 20 large buses and six vans for next year. They provide regular home-to-school routes, transportation for those routes, some after-school activities, and we use them also for some day trips and athletics. However, we have our own Putnam Valley School District owned buses. We have three large buses, 12 vans, two SUVs that we just purchased in 2017. We use these for after-school activities, athletics, and some at-a-district and special student placements. So we talked about long-range planning. We talked about it with facilities. Why are we talking about it? Well, it allows time for implementation. It avoids unnecessary challenges during the budget season. It helps us define spending trends and needs. In other words, it provides clarity for our spending. For example, if we get a state mandate one year, we're talking about the extended school year program right now. That's going to be a mandate that we have to meet, but we might, we might have to pay for it. We might have to, you know, pass that back to, to the local taxpayers. And that's not something we want to have to deal with, buying a bus in a year that we have to, to do something like that. So it provides a means of sustainability and helps us manage to the district budget. Again, a single cash payment for a vehicle can impact program needs in any given year. And it allows us to focus on the foundation for supporting the district's educational vision and keeping up its programs and facilities. So again, it helps us maintain transportation safety and expenses for transportation. Number one, of course, safety of our vehicles that transport all the Putnam Valley children. Renewing our bus replacement plan, we have had one of these in the past. We didn't renew it when it, when we finished using it the last time, but it does, it does help us keep our expenses steady and reasonable for each annual budget. It helps us stay within the tax cap. We have to meet that guideline. We'd like to for our district residents. And the program can be impacted. Again, I'm repeating myself, but I'm trying to make a point. So five-year amortization allows principal and interest to be spread over time and it makes budgeting easier. This financing, if we had to use it whenever we need to do a replacement, you know, we can spread that payment over five years. So how do we do this? Well, first, we can, I tried to come up with what I thought was a good value of our fleet, estimating the value of aging buses and looking at the mileage and repair history. We have a number of buses where the, the engines have been already replaced many times. And actually, after speaking with our mechanic, he tells me, you know, he said, Jill, the engines were replaced, but the bodies are actually, you know, aging out. So, you know, it comes to a point where you do need to replace them. They're expensive. We create a bus replacement plan. In other words, like a home equity, it's there when you need it. I think that would be a good analogy. So we have, we put $500,000. That's what is going to be on the proposition. Will give us the ability to borrow when we need it. We don't borrow the money at any time until we need to use it. We still have to bid for rates and we have to go through the proper procurement process for purchases. We present a bus replacement plan and place the proposition on the ballot. That's what we're about to do. Old buses are used for parts and are placed on an auction site, which is, you know, something we try to recoup any of the money we can from the older vehicles. We borrow only when necessary. Amount gets reduced as we borrow against the approved total. So if we start out with $500,000, we need to buy a bus next year, a large bus. They run around $90,000. That amount gets reduced and the remaining is all we have left to borrow on that going forward. When that runs out, that would be a time to talk about doing this again. With the payback is over five years to smooth out the expenses and we budget for one-fifth of the borrowed cost each year. So that's what proposition number two is about. It's going to be on the ballot May 15. And if anybody has any questions, we can talk about that now.
Jill, could you just talk about how this relates to, or doesn't relate to the later start time?
It does not relate to the later start time at all. It is purely a plan to maintain our vehicles, the expense and the safety of those vehicles. It's just coming at the same time as the later start time plan. So anyone who thinks that that's a related issue, it is definitely not a related issue. This is about school-owned buses. The later start time will only be affected with the contracted buses. The contractor will
They're adding
be providing those buses.
They're adding the four buses.
Right. We are not adding any buses to the fleet.
So it's, it's different than when we, a couple of years ago, created a, an additional reserve account, which was a capital improvement account, which was any surplus that we might have. Would go in there to give us permission. We needed permission from the taxpayer to have that account available. This is simply permission to have a line open in case we have to borrow to buy a bus. It's not, we're not asking for money to go anywhere. We're asking for permission. If we didn't have the plan and a bus broke down next year, we'd still have to buy the bus.
We still have to buy the bus. I have to put the bus in the budget.
Right.
It has to be, it's equipment. We have to put the full amount of the cost of the bus in the budget. So like I said, a large bus, $90,000 can, is a, is figure, you know, it could be one of many things that we have to eliminate from the budget.
And certainly borrowing to replace a bus allows you to pay it over time and not all at once. Do we get, what's, what's the interest rates?
Well, we bid, we get, we have to bid out just like we would with any money that we borrow.
If you had to buy a bus, right.
Right. And those, you know, municipal rates are, are what they are at the time, but
So it's really a plan for the taxpayer to allow us to, to borrow up to 500,000 to replace buses as they break down. So that plan could last us 10 years.
That's true. It could last any amount of time.
It could last us 20 years if we don't need them for a while.
And there's no budget impact until And there's no budget impact until we start taking a loan.
Correct.
I had to read that a couple of times, so that's why I asked those questions.
Tried to make it as clear as possible, and it's, we're doing a lot of different things this year, so it just happens to come at a time when there's other things that are similar.
We have had a plan, and we spent the money over several years.
We did, we did, and there was some transition personnel, business office. We didn't continue with the plan at the time, and that money has run out since then, so...
But it wasn't something that we spent in four years. I mean, it really was over a good amount of time.
Oh, no, no. It, I don't know the number, but it was, I believe it was about $900,000, and we, we used it over 10 years or so.
So then, so taxpayers are clear, this is not an approval for $500,000 in today's, this year's, next year's budget?
Correct. We are not borrowing $500,000.
And we may not in 10 years.
Right.
This just says that when we need a bus or we need something, we have the right to go ahead and get it. And we will borrow the money and spread it out over whatever the period is.
Sounds like good planning. And that's a nice picture of a bus.
That's a Putnam Valley bus?
It's 800 years old.
I should have showed one that was, no, no.
Dave, did they have buses, or are they still using horses?
Only 40 years ago. They didn't look like that, though, I don't think.
Okay, so now to the good stuff. We heard everybody's budgets over the last couple of months. All the departments, high school, middle school, elementary school, special ed, athletics. I believe we've gone through all of them, operations and maintenance. So this is the whole picture altogether. We're going to present the 2018-19 proposed budget for the Putnam Valley School District. And we started looking at our budget with enrollment projections. And I want to go through a few of the things that I have to look at before we even start building the budget. So the first one is enrollment. We usually take into consideration if there is new housing, any construction going on, what do our late enrollments look like. And just to give you an example, last year, after the budget passed, we had 79 late enrollments across different grades in the school district. Coincidentally, we had 69 students move out to other schools or move on. So pretty difficult to predict before we pass the budget, when you still have that going on, registration. We try to maintain the class sizes, and the chart I'm going to show you does not include the students that we send out of the district. So for, these are the grade levels, and for 16, 17, we had 1,700 students across the different grades. In the current year, we have 1,621. This is what the projected is for 2018-19, well, somewhere in the middle, around 1,600 possibly. We did get a report, I believe it was yesterday, no, this morning, on how many students are registered for kindergarten. And right now, we have 82, so my expectation is that that will not be the last of what we have registering. So right now, have no idea where it's going to end up, but estimating between 82 and 90. And these are the current sections that we have in those grade levels. And again, these are all estimates at this time. We're going to keep watching it and, and see where this goes. The next step that I usually look at when the information becomes available is the tax cap calculation. We've never stepped through the calculation at a budget meeting or a budget presentation. We just all know that it exists, and we all talk about the 2%, and I don't know if everybody really understands it. So I'm going to go through the calculation and try to make it as simple as possible. Okay, so we have our prior year's tax levy. That's the first number we need to use, which is our current year now, $35,775,821. Then we have to use a tax-based growth factor, which is determined by the Department of Taxation. It's a regional factor. It has to do with home values in the area. Our tax-based growth factor is 1, so there is no change there. It's still 35,775,821. We have, we remove our prior year's capital exclusion, also known as our capital debt. And then we add back our prior year's building aid for a net change, which is based on the capital debt. So our building aid comes in on the debt, and that, that makes up our prior year's exclusion. We reduce the levy by that exclusion, and we get $34,851,070. Moving on with the calculation, we have, the result is multiplied by the smaller of 2% or the inflationary change in the Consumer Price Index or the CPI. Everybody refers to it as the CPI. So this year, the 2018-19 CPI is 2%. Last year, it was 1.26, and the year before that, it was 0.12. I'm just giving some samples. You'll see the rest of the years later. So after I apply the 2%, it's known as the tax levy limit before our New Year's, our current. 8, 0, 9, 1. Then we apply our 2018-19 exclusions, just like we had the exclusions last year. Sorry, my slides, the numbers moved over, but my exclusion for the debt is $2,601,664. The building aid that we will receive on that debt is $1,372,344. And then we can also take what they call a retirement system contribution rate deduction, which is only in excess of 2%. So the teacher's pension rate is 0.83%, therefore, we get no deduction, and we still have to pay $243,000 extra with no capability of recouping that money from any resource except the budget. So Putnam Valley's allowable exclusions for 2018-19 are $1,229,220, leaving our allowable tax levy limit at $36,777,311. It turns out that the tax levy limit is 2.799 or 2.8%. Amount that we can add to the budget for the tax levy.
So this is the tax spending limit, which there are people that refer to as the 2% tax cap.
Right, but it isn't 2%.
It's based on this formula, and 2% is sort of the ballpark.
2% is a part of the, of the calculation, only if the CPI is 2%?
Right, got it.
Last year wasn't, or a couple of years ago, was less than 1%.
Right.
So when we talk about that limit, that's the limit, if we stay beneath that, where the taxpayers get a rebate of a sort during the year. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'll get into that as we move along. So the proposed levy under the allowable limit is 30, the proposed levy will be $30,000 under that cap, as you'll see as we present the budget. So $36,747,311 is what I've incorporated into the budget to help us, you know, meet our expenditures. So the Putnam Valley tax levy has been under the allowable cap since its inception. And since the levy remains under the cap, homeowners will see a school tax refund check in the fall from the New York State Department of Taxation. It does not come from us. It is not a reduction on your tax bill. So pending any restrictions such as income level, and I believe the income level restrictions are, start at $275,000. So here's the information about that. It's a good idea for people to go to the website. Listed here. It will give them additional information. There are many things to know about eligibility, et cetera. I'm not going to read through all of them, but it's basically the refund or the tax relief check that you receive in the fall is based on your star savings, and there's a percentage applied to that star savings. So depending on where you are in these income levels, that is the percentage of the star savings. This is the star savings that everyone received who was eligible. This is the percentage that would be applied to that star savings, and these are estimates of how much that check would be. Now, these are all for the current year, so I don't have the star information for the new year yet. And then for the enhanced star recipients who are senior citizens, they would, they have a credit of 12% of their star savings. Their star savings was $2,900, so you're talking about $350 on an enhanced star. Okay, so here are some of the fiscal highlights that I'd like to point out. Since 2012, the district has stayed below the tax cap. Star-eligible homeowners have received a tax refund every year since the program started because the district has remained under the tax cap. The proposed tax rate remains lower than it was four years ago. The district continues to build budget thoughtfully and spend the budget in a fiscally responsible manner. The district continues to recognize the residents calling for lower taxes and continues to use available resources wisely and share services whenever possible. Property values should continue to increase if we provide quality programs and offer fiscally responsible methods to do that. So aggregately, the allowable tax levy limit has been reduced by $3.5 million since the inception of, or since 2012. Here is the chart that I created for it to show that the district's tax levy has an average 0.97% decrease over seven years. So the first, whoop, I'm sorry. First year, seeing that the yellow indicates the allowable levy and the brick color indicates the actual levy. So each year, you can see that the brick color is lower than the yellow, indicating that we have not taxed at the allowable level for an aggregate total of $3.5 million. That's pretty significant. And the most, you know, what happens is from year to year, your amounts multiply in what, you know, if you cut your, if you cut your levy, you know, you're losing that amount each year in your taxable levy and not allowing you to tax that amount. So that's the amount that the district has not taxed up until this point. Here is some tax cap data from across the state. These were what was filed as of March 1st for 628 school districts. So the, the blue bar indicates what, they're calling it the tax cap, again, it's only, it's the CPI. So it's only... The orange-colored bar is the maximum allowable increase. And of course, this is averaged for all school districts. And the green is the actual proposed levy increase. So the chart on the bottom here indicates, you know, that those same figures, the 2%, which is the tax cap in 2012, the maximum allowable and the proposed. Along the bottom, I've indicated where our tax cap was in those years. So 1.97, 2.72, 0.76, negative 0.9, negative 1.3, 0.84, and 2.72 for the proposal for next year. And again, we are within, it looks like, the range of where most school districts are, between 2.46 and 2.94. In other words, between the maximum and what people are actually taxing across the state. Also prepared this tax rate comparison showing the percent of allowable tax cap versus the tax cap used and the tax rate that resulted as, the tax rates that resulted. So here, again, the estimated tax rate is based on the September 2017 assessed home values. The proposed tax rate would be lower than it was four years ago at 27.36. And again, that's an estimate. We don't have the values. It's $27. So the rate is 72 cents higher than the term here. And on an average household valued at $330,000, this would see, they would see an increase of about $250.
Before we get too many slides away, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
A really quick question.
The state one?
This one, yes.
Okay.
So the, just to look at the last two numbers, 2017, 2018.
Yep.
Those are the average of all the school districts.
These are average of all schools, 628 school districts in New York.
So if we just looked at this year, 2.46 means many, some school districts went over our proposed 2.72 probably, and some went under to get you a 2.46.
I would imagine, yeah.
Average, okay. So, and the same with the previous years, 1.82, 0.70. That's the average, with some being higher and some being...
Yeah, they didn't indicate, you know, how many were at what point or another, but this is the average, yeah.
I'd like to, just while we're on this slide, point out the, because I did the math on this. Less than 1% per year has been the average tax levy increase over seven years. That's using the numbers, including the 2018 proposed budget, so...
Right, so here, you see that average all these, and it's under 1% over the, over the seven years. So we have come... What we're calling reclassification of our annual debt payment. So we will make our annual... On the advice of auditors, told... Is just, instead of using one checking account, we're using a different checking account. I'll explain as we go. So instead of the, the payment coming from the debt service fund budget, it'll be coming from the general fund budget. The amount of the debt payments are no longer going to be paid out of the debt service fund. There'll be no impact on the tax levy. It's only a reclassification. The debt service fund budget looks deflated this first year, minus 1.3 million. The debt payments will be paid from the general fund. There'll be no impacts to the tax levy. It is only a reclassification, and the general fund budget looks inflated the first year. So there, it's really just a journal entry from one fund to another fund. It does not impact the budget in any way except the bottom one. Because I have to show the expenditure coming from the general fund, so you'll see that number. And when we move forward, I'll, you'll see it further. So here's some of the revenue impacts or budget-to-budget changes. Again, you'll see that inter-fund transfer or debt reclassification of $1.3 million. We have state aid of $57,000, a very low amount of state aid coming in to help support the district this year. Interest earnings are increasing somewhat. I'm projecting $60,000 increase. We have no student tuitions from out-of-district coming in. We are minus $250,000 there. Our taxes will remain under the allowable cap at $971,000. And we will have, we will be using, we'll need to use reserves to stay under the tax cap. And some are, changes are made due to, you know, reducing the liability as well. So for tax sorcery, $275,000. Employee and benefit liability reserve, $100,000. Employees' retirement system reserve, $200,000. And we would be appropriating less, $14,000 less than the prior year for a grand total, a budget-to-budget change of $2.7 million. This is, when we focus on our revenues, this is what we see. We have all of our revenue categories, state, our state and federal sources, at $10.4 million. $57,000 more than last year. Our local non-tax revenues at $510,000, which is a huge decrease because of the out-of-district students that we're, we're not giving tuitions on. Our real property tax revenue, 36.7. Again, increase of 971,490, tax cap being at 2.72%. Appropriated fund balance, we're appropriating $14,000 less than last year, reducing our reliance on our appropriated fund balance. And then our reserves that I just spoke about, the different types of reserves, $1.5 million. For a total of 49, a subtotal of $49.9 million. An increase in the overall part of this, this part of the budget of 2.8%. We have that one-time class, reclassification of our debt transfer, which I have to show, coming in as revenue Debt service fund and going out of the expenditures is $1.3 million. The total revenues Being 51, 919. Total increase budget to budget is $2.7 million.
That answered a question I had when I reviewed the budget in that the 16, 17, 17, 18 budget to budget revenue was only about a million dollar difference. And then suddenly it was three. And that's because almost a million and a half is that reclassification.
Is the reclassification, correct. And these are the expenditure impacts. Again, the inter-fund transfer, debt reclassification, you'll see the $1.3 million. This includes energy performance contract principal and interest payments due. The first year of $590,000. Again, the first year, we have low savings on that because the project will not be completed till the end of the fiscal year next year. And aid will not start flowing until that project is completed. So over the life of the EPC project, we will recoup the money that we spend on the project. But we will not see that the first year. It's just gonna, it's gonna take time for us to recoup that.
And we'll be putting the payments out.
Right, we'll be putting the payments out and the aid will be coming in. And it's supposed to wash the expense. And there is a warranty or guarantee with Con Edison on that.
It's just until the project's done, we're actually at the upfront.
Right. We have to pay the debt service. Teacher retirement system rates are increasing. I'm sorry that my numbers are not lining up. They, they were before. What's going on? The teacher retirement system rates are increasing 0.83% or $243,000. Increase in the health premium, 3.75% or $346,000. Those are also negotiated employee contributions in their contracts. So they help to offset the cost. We have other categories, salaries, contracted services for materials and supplies. $525,000, sorry that this is not lining up. That includes BOSI's services increasing 3%. We have two FTEs, retirement of one teacher and one non-teaching staff member who are not being replaced. This is not good. And we have some programmatic changes. Additional buses through the contractor, four large buses and one van costing an additional $205,000. We'll have Chromebooks, we'll replace laptops at one grade level. That'll save us $100,000. There is a, there's more information down here. Is there a way to make this smaller? I have to end this, okay. Sorry, I want to point out some things and I, okay. Just give me a minute. See if we can see this a little better. Oh, okay. I have to go through. Okay, so, yeah, and they line up better too. Little better. Okay, so we were up to the Chromebooks. We'll be replacing one grade level instead of replacing with laptops. That's a savings of $100,000. And our grand total budget to budget changes in expenditures is $2.7 million. So then when we focus on the expenditures in total, we have our expense category of general support at $4.4 million. Instruction at $29.4 million. The largest or most, you know, increase is in this category, but this is also 2/3 of our budget. So 0.18% increase for this 2/3 of our budget is, it looks like a large number, but it's really not. $525,000, 525. Transportation, we're at $2.88 million. That includes the later, the programmatic change with the later start. The undistributed or employee benefits are at $11.9 million. Mandated expenditure category, really, we have FICA, Medicare, health premiums, and the retirement system contributions in there. Our inter-fund transfers, portion of the debt, you'll see that went down on this line because of the two vans that we purchased last year. We purchased them outright, again, not financed. So we had to pay for them, but that's the reason for the decrease. The subtotal of the budget up to this point, $49.9 million or 2.8%. And again, the one-time reclass of the debt fund transfer, the $1.3 million, brings us to 51, 294, 919, a $2.7 million increase. This is our three-part budget. We have 11.5% in capital expenditures. We have 12.2 in administrative expenditures. And we have 76.3% in instruction or program expenditures.
Jill, before we go, before I forget, can we go back?
Sure.
The teacher retirement system rate increase. I know it's only 0.3, but because it's based on a big number, it's a big number. The, that is a floating number based on essentially what the, what the stock market is doing for their retirement funds that is run by the state, correct?
Correct.
So this is, this is beyond our control. This is mandated increase for us. Now, I'm having a difficult time understanding how the stock market itself, which has skyrocketed since, for the last couple of years now, why we are seeing where those growth, that growth is not being impacted by allowing
One of the reasons you're seeing an increase there and how it was explained to the business officials across the state was that the amount of retirements has tremendously increased in the teachers' retirement system. So they're having to pay out an exorbitant amount of retirements during this time. And I think a lot of districts are offering incentives, things like that, for their employees to help them lower and deal with the lower state aid and to balance their budgets. So that's the reason for, that they're giving us for such a fluctuation
More principals coming out of there because of the more
Right, so they don't have the same investments.
The baby boomers are all taking their retirement.
What goes around, comes around.
I'm not gonna say a word.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and again, I wanted to talk about proposition number two, which is the bus financing. I just did the whole presentation. It's not related to the start time in any way. The bus proposition is asking voters to approve financing up to $500,000 on district-owned buses. No money is borrowed until the replacement vehicle is needed. Proposition allows for borrowing if necessary. Actual dollars are spent only when bus replacement becomes necessary for aging vehicles. We do that through a New York State bidding procurement prop, process and financed over a five-year payback period. This method is the least impact on the program budget while maintaining safety. We are able to spread the principal and interest over five budget years. And I just gave some approximate costs for the two different types of buses that we have. The large one around $90,000 and the vans are around $65,000. Our budget calendar is as follows. We have April 12th for the special business meeting to adopt the budget. April 16th is the last day for trustee petitions due to the district clerk. May 1st is the final public hearing. May 10th is the last day for community members to register to vote. And May 15th is the vote. We have proposition number one, which is the budget itself. Proposition number two, which is the bus proposition for the bus financing. We have two trustee seats open and it will be held at the Putnam Valley Elementary School from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I will be giving this presentation or something like this presentation again next Thursday on March 22nd at our next board meeting. And we'd like to remind everyone to please sign up for our electronic newsletter at www.pvcsd.org. Does anybody have any questions?
Comments and questions? First comment, thank you for doing this more or less exact presentation based on any feedback you may get next week because this isn't a normal board, on board meeting day. If people did want to either attend or watch, I don't want anybody to think we talked about the budget and nobody was present. And, you know, it's so much about getting feedback.
There's 30 people out there.
Don't turn the camera around, Dan.
Another question. On slide 15 of your, of this proposal, of the overall budget proposal, it looked like the cost of the buses for the change in start time was $2,005, but somewhere
Okay.
I wrote it was $3,005 earlier and I can't find where I wrote that.
It was $305,000.
$305,000, right?
On Mr. Bellino's presentation.
Okay.
That is the cost of the additional buses. However, last year, when we were budgeting, we put $120,000 in the budget to have the program maybe in January, which we did not pilot, but instead decided to do it next year. So the increase in the budget for that line would be 200 instead of 300.
I have just one, I'm sorry.
No, no, just the cost, the busing cost, which is the only cost to the start time change, is $306,000 roughly, $305,000 and change.
Right, and that's based on a contractor bus, not the cost of buying a bus.
No, 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 right, based on the contractor bus. And for a programmatic need that addresses, you know, 1,400 students, 1,600 students. About $10.
And of course, that's to accommodate all ridership, complete ridership of all students as we go through that process and we find out who's riding the bus, who's not riding the bus, what's, you know, then we can see if those extra buses are needed and how many are.
No, that's okay. I don't, if, it might be helpful if we could get an understanding of the existing fleet and when we think buses may be being retired and having to buy new.
So it's, it's kind of difficult.
It's gonna be a guesswork. It's like driving your car at 100,000 miles. It could last another 100 or
It's kind of difficult. I asked the mechanic to give me a list of all the buses and all their mileage, thinking that I was gonna be able to kind of determine it from that. And I cannot. I would have to sit down with him and go over each one and ask him to give me his thoughts on that. I think a couple of our vans are starting to get to that point, not the large buses. That's the feedback that I got. I'd have to spend some time with him and really get some more information about it. But I know, just hearing that from him, that I'm already facing a possibility of having to purchase some next year, I don't know exactly when that will happen. Of course, we try to hold out as long as possible, but
And plus, if they're replacing engines, 180,000 miles doesn't mean anything because it's on a different engine, right?
We have about six buses with 250,000 miles on it.
But the bodies are the ones that are, that are hurting.
They have been putting salt on the roads lately, so.
Jill, just to, just to review for me on slide 12. Just make sure I understand this. The, the debt payment shifting.
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong. This appears to be almost a bookkeeping shift to me. This appears to be something to me as though, this was suggested by the auditors?
That's right, correct.
And is this something that, for instance, in my home account, if I had to pay something out of checking, I would move it out of savings into checking? And it's just a matter of having two similar accounts, but the auditors want it to come out of the general fund instead of the debt service fund?
Exactly. Instead of us showing a transfer in the reserve to the general fund, they want the expenditure to come from the general fund. So it's like having two separate checking accounts, exactly as you're explaining.
So there is no real impact at all on this monetarily? It's just coming from a different account?
It is not.
Thank you.
So we will be hearing this with some tweaks, I'm sure, next week?
Right, if there are any new developments in the budget between now and next Thursday, they'll be part of the, Thursday, the 22nd. They'll be updated.
And I have one more question, I'm sorry, then.
Sure.
The state aid number, is that, is that solid? It's never solid this time of year for us.
So it isn't, it isn't solid. We don't have a state budget yet. So we won't know anything on that until possibly after we have to adopt the budget.
So this is your best guess, based on what they're telling you?
So if, if, in, just as a recommendation though, if we do see any additional state aid, I would recommend at this point that that money be applied to the appropriated reserves that we're using. We've been using quite a bit of reserves over the last few years. We've only been able to do or maintain the tax caps that we had because of the use of our reserves over those years. And I wouldn't recommend digging any deeper into those reserves and that we should stay, we can stay under the tax cap, but we, I think that's the only way to go.
But you're already, you're always very conservative when you put the initial budget out. So you don't think there's a risk of, a big risk of us going the other way and getting less state aid?
No, I don't. No, I don't. I was going to say that we are gonna talk about foundation aid tonight. I think in one of the resolutions, the state really needs to come back and, to school districts and replenish the foundation aid that they've been keeping from us for the past six years. And it's, it's our, it's about, I think our district alone, it's like $4 million.
At least a little over three.
Yeah, I mean, it's incredible, so.
We're not alone, every district.
Yeah, every district is having the same problem.
But we have a particularly, a real problem in this area in that the, the aid is based on a rural
Right.
A rural structure.
Well, we're part of the lower Hudson Valley. The lower Hudson Valley receives like 6% of the entire amount of aid that's available
Versus Long Island, which is part of the New York City. And so they, they're considered part of the New York City, even though it's not part of New York City. I mean, I'm talking about Suffolk and out in Long Island.
Yeah, even that, that chart
So that means that they get much more aid than we do because of the classification of lower Hudson, of the Hudson Valley. This is, has been a major issue for years. And now it's compounded because of the, you know, the kind of aid we're getting, the very little aid we're getting, it's shrinking it even more. So, you know, this is what the fight has been for Westchester and Putnam is, and going up.
And even the chart I showed earlier on the 628 school districts, that does not include the big five, what they call the big five, which are the city school districts. They don't have to comply with tax cap. And they, they do eat up most of the aid. And I mean, for obvious reasons, I mean, but
And their budgets aren't voted on by their constituency.
So, you know.
I'm just gonna put it out there, just because I know, Jill, you work on the budget virtually till the day we adopt it. I, the slide I am the most proud of is slide number nine. When we looked, that's the one where you looked at the average for the 628 school districts and where we have fallen the last seven years, I think it is, or however many years. And we have been well below the average, or at least below, and well below the average in every year up until this year. And this year, although we're still below, we're slightly above the average. I would love to get us to the average. And I don't know if that means reserves, and I hear you're not willing. I'm wondering if some of the presentations by principals, some of it was, it would be good if we could, but not necessarily need, could. You two will put your heads together and see if that's doable. If, I trust your judgment fiscally. Dr. Rose, I trust your judgment programmatically. If you come back and say no, we're still below tax cap and then we can all deliberate. But I'd love to see, I know it's symbolic, but I like being at the average and not above the average because we've had such a track record of being well below. When I saw 2.72, this one, I went, huh. When I saw two point seven two, this one, I went, huh, we've never been so close, oh my God.
Well, we were at two point seven two in, you know, and we took, we took action when the controller came down and said, you know, there are a lot of school districts with a lot of reserves, and we did. We did what, I think we did our part. And I think the fact that we cut three and a half million dollars out of school tax levies in the last six years that...
This should be framed, this should be framed and put in the hallway, because I think this speaks to our fiscal responsibility, to our taxpayer. I just, if we keep doing it what now, throw it out there.
We'll do the best we can.
Yeah, I just think we have to heed Jill's warning about our reserves. We have this, we have an ongoing dialogue about it in our office, and, but it's really critical, because I've seen what happens in districts when that reserve, because without those reserves, we would not have been able to manage our programs.
Right, no, no, absolutely. I wouldn't want to touch the reserves, are there some...
And if I had a crystal ball, I would have said five years ago that, let's keep it under one percent every year, and it would have averaged out.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So I don't think...
We said seven years ago, we're gonna, we're gonna keep our tax levy increase under one percent for seven years in a row and improve our programs.
We'd still be in the same place.
We'd be heroes. You know, they would say, you're crazy.
Well, yeah, I mean, this was the conversation of, it's a different conversation, but the idea of, you know, at some point we might need to go and break the cap, because if we keep it below the cap, we're not having to do that because we've been, been so frugal with what we're doing, but it's, it's kind of that confluence of things that have happened, the, the teachers' retirement, a number of different things happening at the same exact time, that we're prepared and ready to deal with, just a matter of, it's kind of, it's not necessarily a shock to the system, but it's definitely not what we've been doing as far as these type of numbers, but they're, the argument is valid.
Jill, since we're talking about the reserves, could we go back to slide fourteen? Because that is a concern, and just as, as if you're running a household, you have to have some reserves for emergency. And could you explain a little bit that line that I see in the appropriated reserves? We had nine hundred and five, nine twenty-five. Are we planning on using a million five this year?
We, we have a million five in there to balance the budget.
Of our reserves?
Yeah. You're talking about in the current year? In se, oh?
Well, I'm just looking at the revenue chart on page fourteen.
So we need to balance the budget somehow. We can't, unless we want to exceed the cap, which we don't, and pass that back on to taxpayers, as long as we can afford to do it within the reserves, we can do this. I'm hoping that with, you know, wise spending and, you know, maybe some costs coming in less than what we've projected them to be, that we won't need to use all of those reserves at the end of next year, much like some prior years. In June, we come back and I say, you know, we have this much, do you want to, you know, can, let's put it back into the reserve. We appropriated it for that purpose, we didn't need to use it, you know, hopefully we won't, we won't need to use it. This year, having to go to one point five, I'm anticipating we will use some of it, but hopefully less than more.
So we are using, though, a lot of our, our reserves just to keep ourselves below that tax cap limit?
That's correct. That's what we've been doing, yep. If the state aid doesn't come in, we have to find it.
And from a year-to-year point of view, the, the buses for later start have that one-year incremental bump, like for instance, the following year, that is, there's not a new additional monies on top of that, that, this current budget. So there, that's a, that's a bump up as far as the percentage.
Well, that will be the cost going forward.
Right, so, right, that'd be, that'd be a new baseline, so you wouldn't have those additional...
What we have this year also in the bus contractor is the fourth year of the contract, and in the fourth year of the contract, we have a zero percent increase. So it was a good year for it to actually take place, but hopefully we won't need all of them either.
There will be a hundred thousand more added, because the cost is three hundred thousand and we have only two hundred in here. That was new.
Well, the cost of the contract, the payments will be three hundred, but the budget-to-budget change on that line is two hundred, because we didn't need to realize another hundred thousand.
Got it, got it.
That's already built in.
Got it, got it. Got it, got it. Okay, my head is spinning. This is...
Thanks, Jill, that was very clear, well done.
Thank you.
And again, to anybody on the board, Jill and Dr. Wills and all the principals, everybody's available about their budget, and also anybody watching, if they have any questions. We've all had days to look at this, that's where we had all these questions coming. If anybody has any questions, people in the business office are available.
Right, they can contact us at the business office. We're also beginning to work on the newsletter. The newsletter will be done in a couple of different parts. As you know, a lot of people are having problems with the post office across the state. Everybody's been having some issues, especially Westchester County. We've been hearing about, we had our own last year.
In the bulk mailing thing.
So we're gonna be putting out a newsletter online before the mandated portion of the budget newsletter that we have to put out, and then we'll be putting out a separate one. So it'll be a smaller one that goes out in the mail with just particulars on the budget itself, whereas the newsletter that we have online will be more detailed about, you know, what's going on in school.
And don't we have a carrier pigeon budget line for this year to be able to send it out?
With the horses to replace the buses.
Yeah, personal delivery.
Now we need farm hands.
Okay.
Okay, reports. I only see, yeah, no, we have those students, does Dr. Wills have something to talk to us about today?
Just, just a couple of things that I did want to mention. I wanted to thank the regional support counselors who came to us through BOSI's and all the teachers and support staff who came to the grief sessions on Monday morning and afternoon. We had excellent turnout from our district and from the support staff, from our clinical staff, from our teachers. And there were many parents with their children here. We had therapy dogs as well, and it was a very powerful time, very powerful session. And I do want to thank BOSI's for helping us with this and for all of those people who came. It was very, very helpful. I also want to thank the staff members who came in for crisis teams on Saturday and Sunday, where we worked together to develop the grief sessions and the structure for that, and then, and the ongoing work on that, which was during the, during the week, last week on, on Friday. And a couple of things I did want to mention, of positive things that we're doing. One of the things I hope that people will think about is joining the community read, which is a man called Ove, that's the book we're reading. And again, it's a way for the community to come together and to think about some of the deeper issues that connect us and that make us feel like a community, like a family. We will have our read here at the high school on April nineteenth, but there are dates for many of the locations in the district, in the community, over the month of, of April. Another thing I wanted to mention was an amazing program put on by Scott Spurling's class called Through Her Eyes, The Eyes of Ruby Bridges, who was, who integrated on her own, a child integrating a school district in the South, following the desegregation ruling in nineteen fifty-seven. And it was, the students were remarkable, and the idea of having the shadow play for that made it very, very unique. And just a wonderful way for our students to understand what one child can do and what she went through in order to enter that school district. So I want to really compliment Scott and the children in that class for an amazing performance, and something that really taught our students about what struggles people went through at that time, African-American students went through during that period. I also would like to just mention the calendar, we've talked about it, we've sent something out, we know that we will be making up three days, but I'm afraid if tomorrow is another day, it will be another day. It'll be a fourth day during that spring break week, which is, is very difficult for people to manage, I know that. But we must comply with the requirements for the hundred and eighty days for the school district. So just, we are going to post an actual calendar on our website after tomorrow, and that people will be able to see as they go into the website.
I'm just gonna throw out an unpopular question. Do we, have we used them all? Is there flexibility, because I know some districts who have lost more days than us, which is ridiculous, would a superintendent's conference day on June twenty-fifth meet that same need? I don't bring the students in, but just bring the teachers in?
First of all, our contract, we would have to have an SMOA with the contract, because the contract only permits three. So we would be able to, I'm sure, arrange something with the, with the teachers. The problem with making that decision now is that we put ourselves in a situation where anything could occur between April and that date, and we would...
Oh, you mean that may already need to be used?
Not at this point, but it could be between the time of the spring break and the end of June, and then we would really be stuck, because, well, we'd lose a day in aid. And the, the issue is, you must use all available days according to state law, all available days, except for federal holidays. Jeremy's done a study of this. And...
What are you doing in your spare time, Dr. Wills?
He's an expert on this topic. But it's, it's, it is, it's not impossible, but we really need to use all of our days first.
I mean, it really was, I mean, just fortuitous planning that this year's April break included the two days of, the first two days of Passover, just Holy Thursday and Good Friday, so that we're building in a three-day weekend, hopefully, I mean, a one, two, three, four, five, a possibly six-day weekend if tomorrow doesn't have a five-day weekend. So that, that, we haven't had that in the past, you know, so...
Well, I think the most important change that took place was last year, I think, was it last year, the first year, that we only took two days in February break? Because if we had had those days as days away, we would now be in really a very, very bad place.
Going into July.
So districts that have had that full week off are now...
I do think it's important to note that we, you know, a letter was sent to the Commissioner of Education, giving, asking for relief for some of the days. I don't know what kind of a response, but in the past, I think there was one other time when they did give us a day or two.
Hurricane Sandy.
Right, yeah. They did give us some relief on those days, so it's yet to be seen.
Yeah, I saw, I saw a letter and the response was, we'll talk about it in April, was more, it was very nicely worded, but it was essentially, we'll talk about it in April.
Use everything first and then we'll let you know.
We'll talk about it in April.
Exactly, exactly.
It was not overly helpful. Okay, that's fine. And I, I know there are no students here tonight, and that's by design, we were afraid to get them out in the snow, in, if there was going to be snow. Are there any other reports? We'll do that all next week, okay? I'd like to open up to public contribution. Okay, let's go on to new business. Mr. Farrar?
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent schools to appoint Maria Margiota to a twenty-six-week probationary appointment effective March twelfth, two thousand eighteen, through September twelfth, two thousand eighteen, extendable to March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, as a school calendar office assistant one at the middle school on step two of the CSEA salary schedule. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an additional point-two teaching assignment for six weeks, beginning February twelfth, two thousand eighteen, for the following high school English teachers, covering a teacher out on a leave of absence. Tracy Getman, Carrie Hightman, Rob Lathrop, Lisa Penta, Marissa Tarkington.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved and recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an additional point-oh-three assignment for math challenge for Mick Coleman, effective February one, two thousand eighteen, through the balance of the twenty seventeen, eighteen school year.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent schools to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Deborah Spurling, a teacher in the district, effective November first, two thousand twenty, as per document one twenty-eight slash eighteen, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? We had, twenty twenty seems like very far away, so we will have many opportunities. The next three items on the agenda are about retirements of teachers who have been institutions in our district and which are going to be significant losses to us. So I felt I wanted to at least comment once on the next three items, and we will have opportunity to celebrate the accomplishment careers of these individuals. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent schools to accept the resignation for purpose of retirement of Scott Spurling, a teacher in the district, effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, as per document number one twenty-nine eighteen, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Christine Krill for the purpose of retirement, a teacher in the district, effective November sixteenth, two thousand twenty, as per document number one thirty slash eighteen, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Oh, boy, I got a good one.
We win.
Okay. Beat resolved that by the Board of Education of Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam County, New York, as follows. Section one, the proposition here and after set forth is hereby authorized to be submitted for the approval of the qualified voters of the school district election to be held in said school district on the fifteenth day of May, two thousand eighteen. Section two, the school district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to include as part of a notice to the annual district meeting an election notice with reference to the submission of said proposition in substantially, substantially the following form. Notice is hereby further given that at said annual election to be held on May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, the following proposition will be submitted. Shall the following resolution be adopted, to wit, resolved that the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam County, New York, is hereby authorized to pay the cost of the purchase of school buses, including incidental equipment and expenses, in connection therewith, at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred thousand dollars, and said amount or so much thereof as may be necessary, shall be raised by the levy of tax upon taxable property of said school district and collected in the annual installments as provided by section four fifteen of the education law, and in anticipation of such tax obligations of said school district shall be issued. The school district has determined this to be a type-two action pursuant to the regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation promulgated pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the implementation of which, as proposed, the regulations provide, will not result in a significant adverse environmental effect. Section three, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Resolved to set the following dates for action regarding the twenty eighteen, nineteen district budget vote and board election. May first, two thousand eighteen, final budget hearing, seven PM at the high school cafeteria. May third, two thousand eighteen, voter registration at the high school from four PM to eight PM. May seventh, two thousand eighteen, voter registration at the elementary school from three thirty PM to seven thirty PM. May ninth, two thousand eighteen, voter registration at the high school from four PM to eight PM. May 9, 2018, voter registration at the high school from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. May 15, 2018, budget vote and budget elect, and board election at the elementary school from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Please hold. There we go. Resolved to approve, resolved to approve the notice of public budget hearing, budget vote, and election for Putnam Valley Central School District, per Document 122/18 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number ten.
Resolved to authorize clerk of the district to arrange and enter into contracts for voting machines, privacy booths, poll books, to have the necessary ballots printed, and to make other arrangements for the district budget vote and board election, scheduled for May 15, 2018, as are necessary and appropriate. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eleven.
Okay, I picked a good night to forget my glasses.
Poor David.
I forgot my glasses at home, and I'm struggling over here. Okay.
This measure is, just to mention that, following the Parkland shooting and the deaths of 17 young people.
If I have my bifocals on, would you like me to do it for you?
I got it.
Seventeen young people who, who were killed that day. The Lower Hudson superintendents developed a resolution which has come before school districts throughout the area, and it's a way of marking and remembering those 17 students, their parents, who will suffer for the rest of their lives because of this act, and provides at least our remembrance of, you know, what can happen and what we have to try to prevent in our schools, and the awesome responsibility we do have to protect our students.
Okay. Whereas the safety of all children in our schools is of paramount importance, and whereas the proposed 5% reduction to the current federal education budget would include $425 million in cuts to mental health and school safety programs, such as a school emergency response to violence program and project prevention grants, and whereas 17 students and staff members were killed and many others were injured as a result of a school shooting in Parkland, Florida on February 14, 2018, and whereas in the past five years, 439 students and staff members have been shot in more than 239 school shootings across the country, and whereas a need for greater access to mental health services for students and families in our schools and communities was ranked as a top funding priority by the majority of superintendents in New York State, and whereas we believe that every child has the right to a safe school environment that has an appropriate level of security as determined by our community, and whereas a reasoned and rational approach to gun control and increased access to mental health services for students and families in our schools and communities are essential elements of a safe school environment, and whereas the Putnam Valley Central School District fosters civic discourse and promotes student understanding of government and current issues, and whereas the coordinated effort at the federal and state levels boosted by law enforcement and community engagement is needed to change the paradigm and protect our communities and our schools. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of Putnam Valley Central School District calls upon New York State Assembly and New York State Senate to implement a reasoned and rational approach to address gun control and background checks and prioritize funding and resources for increased access to mental health services for students and family in our schools and communities, and, I'm sorry, I lost my place, and resolved that the Board of Education of Putnam Valley Central School District implores federal and state leaders to take immediate action to provide additional funding to schools and communities for adequate mental health, social, and guidance services and resources for the purpose of prevention, support, and response. Provide funds for districts to upgrade their facilities if internal safety audits find there is a need for improvements. Provide funding for essential security personnel and related professional development for all staff as determined by the local school district. Enact a rational and reasonable gun control measures. And resolve that the Board of Education in the Putnam Valley Central School District affirms that our civic engagement of students in Parkland, Florida, and beyond who are speaking for our school safety, support for mental health services, and legislation to address gun violence needs to be heard. Resolved that the Board of Education in Putnam Valley Central School District opposes any reductions in federal or state funding for education that would cut mental health or school safety programs, and further be it resolved that the Board of Education of Putnam Valley Central School District calls upon the Governor, New York State Assembly, and New York State Senate to address gun violence and provide support for local school districts to promote school safety.
Second.
Questions or comments? I think, Dr. Wills, you said it all. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there number 12? Yes, number 12?
Whereas foundation aid was established in 2007 in order to help provide a sound basic education to all students, whereas the foundation aid formula has not been allowed to run since 2009, whereas New York State is behind in funding foundation aid by more than $4 billion, whereas the 2018 executive budget proposal would restrict and further by capping expense-based aids, including transportation, building, and BOSEs aids, whereas the 2018 executive budget proposal would require certain districts to have their building-level spending plans approved by the Division of the Budget and the State Education Department, whereas school districts have been left without a school funding system that accurately reflects changes in enrollment, student needs, and district wealth, and whereas school districts deserve a funding system that provides adequate equity, flexibility, predictability, and clarity. Now therefore be resolved that the Putnam Valley Central School District Board of Education calls on the New York State Assembly and Senate to increase foundation aid funding by a minimum of $1 million over the executive proposal. Reject proposed caps on expense-based aids. Reject the proposal to have the state approve district spending plans. Provide dedicated funding to support emerging student needs, including health and mental health services, districts with increased enrollment and growing numbers of English-language learners, and commit to a restart of the foundation aid formula with a plan to fully fund the formula within three years.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through 14 as presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE, CPSE placements. We're amending the dates that employee will be absent. We're correcting some dates. We're amending the dates for long-term special ed substitute teacher. We're authorizing the superintendent to enter into agreement with the town of Putnam Valley for them to rent our school buses for summer camp. We're approving the spring coaches for boys and girls lacrosse, track and field, baseball, softball, baseball tennis, and our videographer. We give special thanks to Tommy Hirsch and Don Shropshire and Matt Mello, who volunteered to do the coaching and transport videoing and taking our kids to tennis. We're approving the overnight trips for the athletic teams to the wrestling tournament that was held February 23rd and 24th in Albany. We're approving the cheerleaders' March 2nd and 4th tournament, and we're approving the gymnastics' March 3rd tournament championships in Long Island. We're approving additions to substitute lists. We're accepting a donation. The district agrees that for list of specified items, we will use the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSEs cooperative bidding. We're amending the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSEs commodity agreement as per the material received. This is where we're purchasing things with them. We're approving an overnight trip of three nights for the high school robotics club members attending the robotics competition from March 22 to March 25 in stuff in New York. We're authorizing the superintendent to enter into agreement with the town to use our buses for summer camp, and we're authorizing that the superintendent is the lead evaluator of our principals.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open it up to anybody else on the board for anything or public comment on any topic.
I have, I have one thing. The Putnam Valley Education Foundation, the deadline for grant applications is this Thursday, and we, at this point, only have two minor grant applications that have come in. So, there's going to be, so, I would say if people have a grant in mind and haven't had the time, based on the weather or whatever else, to get it done, and you can't get it done by Thursday, I would go to the Education Foundation website and ask them for an extension, and then submit it quickly because there's going to be a lot of money left over, and we like to spend every dollar, so.
Understood.
And maybe we can give, maybe we can send out an email to the, to the staff.
Yes.
Trips, 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 trips.
What about trips?
Trips. They should be, they should be looking for money to go on trips.
To go on some more unique trips.
Trips.
Absolutely. That can be a grant. Excellent, that's right. Speaking of trips, and I know you sent an email, Dr. Wills, and I don't have it, we did in the middle of the snowstorms, didn't we have some of our students go up to Albany?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that.
The science...
Oh, I'm glad. Science research, three of us students went to the Albany science research competition in the middle of the storm.
Right, right.
Yes, just that day on that Tuesday.
One day before.
And one of our students, Paige, I believe, came in first, and will go on to the next round at the, at the national level. So, I haven't gotten a full report, but that part I know, and we will be following that as we go.
That's great. I just remembered seeing that email.
Jasper and, Jasper and Sarah Broas.
That's it.
Jasper Casban and Sarah Broas also went and were there at the Albany competition. It's an honor just to be at that, you know, at that level, and the science research program is really flourishing. We have about 35 students, I believe, who've signed up for next year for the program.
That's great. Okay. So, if there's nothing else, I'd like, resolve to convene an executive session for one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, and 12 matters of the employment history of 12 particular persons, after which time there will be no additional business conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. And stay safe if there's more snow.